That completes all the work on the non-millet marijuana bills today.
Just for clarification, the minority reports on up to test.
All right. Let's take up 1392, an act to amend the main medical use of marijuana. Are we ready to jump into this? We need to take a five-minute lentils health break.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. 1392. And by the way, everyone who's here for the marijuana bills today, I appreciate your patience. It's been a long day for us, but we've actually been up here, you know, having stuff to do, so I imagine it's been a longer day waiting, so. It's been riveting.
All right, so LD 1392, an act to amend the main medical use of marijuana act. I didn't summarize the bill here. The summary is lengthy and it's in the bill itself, but there's 26 different points. I'd be happy to read through them or else we can get to them as we start to work through the bill. So I also summarized the testimony. I won't read through that all unless there's a request to do so. Turning to the back of the salmon-colored sheet, I... There was a few information requests that were made. One was for Mr. Albert from the department to present today to answer some questions about the bill, specifically for their exclamations of section one, section 13 of the bill were asked for. There was... The packet that's here right in front of you, there's the white... The white packet is the main medical use of marijuana act in its entirety, and I engrossed the changes that the bill makes into this white document, which could be helpful to use as a resource as the committee works through it. So all the changes in gray are those changes that are proposed, that are proposed by the bill. And so that's again the entire act in its entirety with the engrossed changes in white. And then right behind that, in the sand-colored sheet, is Title 16, which is the only other area of statute that's impacted by this bill. Section one deals with Title 16, and so that's Title 16, Chapter nine, Intelligence and Investigative Record Information Act in its entirety with the engrossed change on page four there. There was some proposed amendments that were made during the public hearing. There was amendments that were submitted by Mr. Albert from the department at the public hearing. In his testimony, they're attached in blue, and since that time, I've also received an additional amendment in an email from Mr. Albert, and that's attached at the end in white. So the blue and the white, again, were submitted by Mr. Albert. There was also a suggestion made from Meadow, for the committee to explore a stakeholder group, to explore further many of the emerging issues coming from the medical marijuana industry. Such a group could be included in an amended version of this bill. Meadow also urged the committee to seriously consider an amendment being made to change the status of main medical marijuana dispensaries to for-profit from nonprofit, and I think that the committee had some questions for them about that change. And then finally, Ms. Gennabello is on behalf of main matters. In her testimony, she strongly encouraged the committee to amend the bill to explicitly prohibit the department from requiring healthcare providers to submit patient name, date of birth, street address, and other personally identifiable information via the, I should say, online portal. There's no fiscal note that is required in this bill. I did flag some potential legal issues within various sections of the bill, and I can either throw over them now or just interject as they come up as we're working through the bill. So it's up to the committee how they'd like me to proceed.
Well, this is... So Representative Sanderson, Representative Sanderson is the sponsor of the bill. I know she's done extensive work on it. So I guess I would like to ask her, if she has any particular way she'd like to proceed on it.
First of all, I think it would be important to have Mr. Albert come up and share his amendments. We'll go over those first so we can get those out of the way. And then maybe while he's right there, we can start going back and forth on some of the changes and proposals that were developed.
Good afternoon. Ken Albert, Department, excuse me, Center for Disease Control, Director of Chief Operating Office. You have in front of you a couple of amendments that were proposed. I'd like to walk through with you, the first one being to section 19, 1392.
Where are these amendments?
They're on the white.
On the white?
The blue was what was submitted at the public hearing, and the white at the very end of this packet, I think is the most up-to-date amendment I mentioned submitted.
So if I look at my full public hearing, I highly recognize what I'm looking for, but is something blue?
It's just getting...
It was in the packet from our...
Page five of the bill, section 19. Three registry identification cards. Since the advent of... The initial intent of this was really to remove the registered patient from the requirement to receive a registry identification card. But what we noticed afterwards was that the... You see in the third line, there were the strikeout of registered patients as you see registered primary caregivers. And you recall that by session, we allowed for employees of registered primary caregivers to also be required to be registered with the department. That language was never added in this particular section, so we're suggesting an amendment to the bill to add the registered primary caregiver employee to this language as well. The second would be section 21 of the bill. I think, I'm not sure where this occurred. It could potentially have been between the reviser's office and the department, but section 21, and I would, is 22 MRSA, and you received the statute in its entirety. I think it would be helpful for you if you moved to section 24, 25 of the law. It was proposed here to be repealed, but really what the department's intention was, was to remove the requirement the department may not register, issue a register identification card to a qualified patient with under 18 years of age. That language goes on to provide, however, that a medical provider may not issue a certification card to a minor unless they do several things: patient education, discussion with a parent or guardian, the listed benefits. It's not the department's intention to remove that responsibility from the medical provider to discuss the listed benefits with the patient. So we would add that language back in to the bill, but yet remove the requirement that the department issue a registered identification card to the minor. Next would be section 24. The last section of that language, I would say two or three lines up to the bottom. This is a requirement that the department issue a registered identification card to. We're eliminating the registered patient again. The bill would clean up the requirement to involve the patient with the department to registered primary caregivers, to employees of registered primary caregivers, and then goes on. And you'll see, you'll see a point where it says cards expire one year after date of issuance. The department wants to end that paragraph there, because the language goes on to say, except that the date of the issuance of the expiration date of the registered primary caregiver's identification card must be the same as the issuance of the expiration date on the patient's registered identification card. We no longer issue patient registered identification card, nor do we have that information available to us. So that's all language, and this can be repealed. I would also go back, Representative Teen's questions of me during the work session regarding section one of the bill. And I think I quite testified at that point that it was a question on my mind about whether or not there was an incorrect citation there, because as Representative Teen pointed out, there was a language in section, oh, sorry, in Title 16, section 806 really is about investigatory information from law enforcement with regard to abuse and neglect of children and those sexual offenses. And so in fact, it's actually, it's 805. And again, that the language, 805, is provided to you. Is that Tean that relieved?
Yep. That is through the Tean packet.
So 805 creates exemptions when information may be shared... Exception, I'm sorry, when information may be shared, and it goes down through several paragraphs to other criminal justice agencies, to a person and their lawyer, to the accused and their attorney, to a court, the Secretary of State, and so on. And we have received advice from the Attorney General's Office that in order to avoid law enforcement agencies waiving the confidentiality under the Freedom of Access Act to their investigatory reports, that we should include, if they want to share them with us for purposes of administrative management of investigations, that we should include the main medical marijuana program within the ambit of the exceptions. And so I apologize for the wrong citation there and wish to correct that now. As I said in my testimony, there were several parts of the summary that were actually inaccurate. I just want to make that point again, that paragraph six of the summary is not, is not correct at all. Neither is paragraph 10. I'm on the summary of the bill itself. And as I understand, there are several other proposed amendments from Representative Sanderson and others that the department will be happy to entertain at this time.
Any other questions? Yes, Representative Teen.
I want to ask you sort of a high-level question, and... My colleagues on this committee have done a tremendous amount of work over the last couple of weeks. Much more work than I have on this. And I really want to get a sense as to where we're going this afternoon and where we're going into next week as we try to get this wrapped up. And let me just sort of, I'm going to play my cards and lay my cards out here, because I think I probably had this conversation with a lot of the people sitting here in this room. This is in really simple terms. We've got three bills in front of us now that are what I would call, you know, almost like, each one of them is almost like an ombudsmen's bill with a lot of different pieces to it. We've got Representative Sanderson's bill, we've got the department's bill, also under this type of approach, Representative Sanderson. We've got Senator Savio's bill. And we talked about these bills a couple of weeks ago. You know, again, it's sort of breaking, it was one of the people who've done an awful lot of work on this. You know, was, seemed to be pulling together, you know, trying to pull together something that we could all agree on that satisfied, you know, facilitated the concerns of a lot of the people in this room. And I'm trying to figure out, where are we going to go tonight and where are we going to go as we go into next week? Because I'm just going to say, because I've said it to most of the people in this room. Issues in these bills and the other bills we have in front of us that have a fundamental... They're really based upon, you know, patient access and patient rights. You know, the hospital bill, we worked a little bit today. The, like, the buildup of people with disabilities that we still have in front of us. You know, I'm super interested in dealing with those issues on their own. But to me, a lot of these other bills really seem to have a lot to do with the landscape either between the dispensary model, the caregiver model, and the interface between the department and the various business models. And I'll just be really honest, knowing that a big conversation in this state around legalization is looming, whether it happens out there or in here or over there, it's happening. I am really... I'm not going to say uninterested. I'm really loathe to do things in this room that really do, are really more about changing the landscape, changing the landscape as we go into the legalization conversation. I'm just letting folks know, I don't think I'm going to be willing to support the governor's bill.
The department's bill. I'm in current.
Sorry. I don't think I'm going to be willing... I'm willing to support a bill that most of the interested parties are in agreement on if it comes to us. Or I'm willing to say no to all of these bills and deal with them next year or deal with them in a couple of years. So again, as we have what I think is going to continue to be a relatively complicated and detailed conversation, I just want the folks to sort of know where I stand on this stuff. I'm perfectly willing to sit here tonight for as long as we need to and work this bill or the other bills. I'm ready to vote against this bill. And if there's something really important in this bill that needs to go, you know, that can be brought into Representative Sanderson's bill or Senator Savio's bill, do that, do that too. But, you know, to sort of deal with, here are the department's issues in one bill, and here's these issues in another bill, here's these issues in another bill, I just don't think that's a place where I'm going to be. I'm just letting folks know. So if the idea is that we're going to work the department's bill for a while and try to get a vote on it, and then table the other bills, I'm probably not going to be there with that. And I'm just letting all my colleagues and friends know that.
May I respond?
Yep.
I think that the department has always been in a challenging position, Representative Teen, with regards to this program, because it's, we're not in a situation of being able to sit down with all the parties at the table and try and hammer out the department's needs with regard to administration of this program. So that's why for the past couple of years, I've come before this committee with bills that kind of clean up the language, clean up the bill. There's some cleanup in here, and there were some proposals in here that would allow us to, for instance, the compliance pieces. Right now, as it stands, for a dispensary or a caregiver, there are no intermediate sanctions. It's all or none, and I don't think that's fair to a caregiver or to a dispenser. So, and so I think this is the department's, this is where we come when we need the legislative assistance in helping us to administer a program that is as complex as this is. And so that's why I'm before you today.
Representative Teen.
Yeah, and I, I think I have appreciation of the position that you're in on that issue. And really what I'm just telling you, what I think is trying to be a very honest way, is I think those are issues that need to be addressed. I'm willing to live with the status quo for a little bit longer, knowing what's looming in the future. And if, again, if people can come together and get to a place where we're all comfortable on the issues around inspections and, you know, regulation of either one of the two business models, I'm willing, I'm willing to do that now, but I'm also willing to live with the status quo for a bit longer, you know, as these other issues. And again, I'm just really just trying to be transparent about where I am on these issues as we move forward. I'm not trying to minimize or debate you or argue with you about such an issue, and I do agree. And, you know, I'm in a rough spot here, and I expect us to get over it.
Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. Ten minutes to five, Friday afternoon. Most of the people in this room have been sitting here all day. And after they've been here all day, now we have, and we've been working on these weeks, on these bills, and we're very close in many ways, except for maybe a couple of areas, to agreement with the parties. We have some agreement, we still have some not so far together. But it seems, it seems rather shame to me that after these people who sat here all day, we have the House Chair of this committee saying he's not interested in...
Representative Sanderson, I...
May I finish?
I don't want to, I don't want to cast this version on anyone.
No, no, no. Let me finish, please. I'm not meaning to be disrespectful in, in essentially working these bills or having a landscape change in anything unless it's either a comprehensive package. I would just like to say that I feel as though if that's how Representative Teen felt, then maybe that's information we could have known about earlier in the day. So we could have determined, are we ready to really sit down, roll up our sleeves, and roll these into one package? Or are we going to take them one by one and maybe put them off for another day so we didn't keep all the individuals who are sitting here here all day? And that's, that's all I had to say.
Representative Sanderson.
I'm willing to sit here as long as it takes to work through these bills. I didn't mean to, that's, if you took, if you mean me not willing to sit here and work through these bills, I apologize, because we decided to work and work through these bills. And I'm ready to vote on, I'm ready to vote on tonight.
Representative Sanderson.
I would make the suggestion that we work the department bill separately. Any other bills, those can be up for rolling into packages together. I don't think we're going to get to that today. But I really do think that we've had Mr. Albert here all day, or most of the day. We should be working this bill with him and get through it. I'd be happy to go through the changes that he and I discussed this morning in this bill and where we've come to a consensus on, or as close to consensus on a couple of things as we're ever going to be, and just go through that with the committee.
Okay.
All right. So if you're looking at the bill directly, on page one, section one, there was some real concern about, on part of the stakeholders in this process, about section 1, 1A, and where the gathering of intelligence and the investigative record information is used in the operation and oversight. I heard several indications that people were wondering if this was going to be collected and kept and used in a file. However, that is not the department's intention. So we have an opportunity to change this language now to read. On the bottom sentence would be, "used in the management of a current investigation pursuant to the main medical use of marijuana."
Can you, Representative, can you spell out for us what, so what effectively that amendment does?
What that amendment does is if there is an active investigation on an individual who is either being investigated for violations of the main medical use of marijuana act, that information can be shared between the department and law enforcement.
All right, thank you. Any corrections on that piece before Representative Sanderson was still on?
Just continue.
It was asked if you could repeat that.
Yes, the language change in the bottom sentence where it says "used in the operation and oversight", that will change "used in the management of a current investigation pursuant to the main medical use of marijuana."
So rather than authorizing for regular operation and oversight, this would be exclusively the case of the open investigation?
Yes.
And just to clarify, also with the change that has moved to section 805 and out of 806?
Yep.
All right. Continue on.
Okay. Section... Section 11H, depending on what we do with another bill, that could be a moot point. Probably left in pretty, whether we'd want to just delete it now.
The department would recommend that we leave it and let it reside in conflict with a bill if it passes?
The sponsor would recommend that we remove it and leave it as current law.
So...
I guess the department doesn't do the sponsors. So is there a suggestion that there, just the current statute framework be left alone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, so...
So no, no, no changes under that.
Right, so it wouldn't even need to be in the bill because if there's no changes, it wouldn't be part of the bill.
Okay, in section 13, there was a lot of concern around the new language that says, "or a municipal official to further the business of the municipality". With conversations with Mr. Albert this morning, we can change this to, "or a municipal official to enforce municipal code." That was the intent of the department.
And I know...
And that will appear three places in the bill.
And I know in some of our conversations with some of the representatives of the caregivers that seemed to, at least from our conversations with those particular individuals, that seemed to address their concerns was, my understanding, my understanding that the concerns were the vagueness of it and how it could be interpreted in ways that may not be intended. So this specified that it's about municipal code, enforcing municipal codes, and what are your concerns? Senator Haskell.
Would that definition include line hazards? Would that include those kinds of things? You know, when I think codes, I think building codes, and I might not think what, you know, another reason that people want, you know...
I've heard that it might include even something as, out there as making sure someone has a proper electrical...
That, well, that, see, that would be a municipal code. Yeah, I think that makes good sense. I know, I get that. I also want to meet... I also want to be sure that if there is a municipal official with a concern about fire hazard, that they would be, you know, with forest fire on the way, I'd be able to do that. It wouldn't have to be just building codes. When I see the word code, I just wonder what that entails, what that includes and what it might not include.
Is there someone who can, can you?
No, I can, from the department's perspective, this, and this is what the municipalities really encourage us to move in this direction, to allow the municipalities to enforce the code, the municipal code that they have, ordinances, local ordinances, around fire safety, for example.
All right, thank you. Does it make a difference whether or not we use the word code or ordinance, or the census and all that? Or is?
I would look too close to that.
I can look into the difference between the four languages.
Okay, all right. Representative Sanderson, if you could continue along.
That change will happen in both, in not only Section 13, it will change in Section 14, and it will also change in Section 33, is correct. All right, the next one is one that was of great concern. Section 15, this is the piece that moved a family member to cultivate and act as a primary caregiver for a member of their family or household without registering. The language was deleted by the department, but we are going to amend this. A family member, primary caregiver, will, you'll be able to cultivate for a fam, up to two family members. You must register, but the department will waive the fees.
I have a question for Mr. Albert about that, I know we were discussing this this morning. One question that was raised was, obviously, here in this committee, we'll be aware of these changes being made. Someone who is growing, or a son or a daughter, is not registered. Because they're not registered, we don't know necessarily to contact them to let them know that that's changed and they need to register. How do, how do we ensure that they know and are not then in, how are they compliant with the law?
I think the basic premise in law is that there is no ignorance of the law, but we would certainly do a lot of outreach, as we do with the rule prongage that will come after this, reach out through the various associations, and through our own, our own needs, to communicate this change. The other piece of this is that, to the extent that occurs, Senator Bittin, you know, our goal would be to provide technical assistance to the individual and have them register. It's not an immediate, you know, sanction for what, for your violation under the facts that you raised. If that, you know, if providing the technical assistance did not result in modified behavior by the individual, then it would be a different story. But we'll try and get them registered, and again, we.
And I also, I got a question, and it's getting to the point. Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. I also talked with Mr. Albert this morning regarding a family member who, who may have to exceed that two-patient cap. And he assured me that there could certainly be exceptions made, yeah. On a case-by-case basis.
That's right, Representative, and again, you know, especially, you know, if you've got a two-parent home, or, you know, we can work out some type of arrangement with the family, if there's, if they have more than, let's say, two children that they're cultivating for, two young members that they're cultivating. We'd also add that, you know, family member needs to be defined, which we, you know, we spoke about that. And the department would encourage that, within that definition, that we will, as I understood the sponsor to require, that that definition be prongaged through the rulemaking process under the Main Administrative Procedures Act, that we also require that be that family member be a resident of the same name.
Yes.
No, you, yes, deliberately.
That, that would not be, right, that would not be.
Yes.
So, my, so is the intent behind this, so I know we were just dealing with another bill, which I believe we put on the pass over the letter, about disclosure of who registered caregivers are, in that case where, we decide, we, we asked the department to respond, or the police were to call to confirm if someone was a registered caregiver or not. Is this because of those situations where if there's a question about whether someone is legally growing or illegally growing, and if the police were to call and say, hey, we got complaints about this person, it turns out that maybe they're in compliance, they're growing for two people, but you don't have them registered, so you can't tell them one way or the other whether they're, if it's illegal grow or illegal grow, is that, is that the intent?
And that is the intent of this bill. And the way that the exceptions were before, it resulted in law enforcement seizing marijuana for somebody who actually fell within an exception. It was, really was, it was a burden on law enforcement, and obviously on the individual that had their marijuana seized, because they weren't here, they couldn't check it through Metro, or they weren't registered with us when they called to confirm or not. And we don't, we don't know over the phone if they actually meet the exceptions, although that somebody could be alleging that they meet the exceptions, we don't know the fact pattern there, so we need that law enforcement's hands. This will eliminate that problem, and still not require the individual to pay, have to pay for that registration.
Senator Haskell.
If we're ready, before we move on, can I just go back to Section 12 and understand that?
Yes. This is.